Okay, Mike, I've got it at five o'clock. I will just let everybody know that's online and everything in the room that this is being recorded. I show Donnie Hogg is online, Jennifer Nielsen Buckley, Laura Canilias, and Scott Jacobs is on, are online. If there's anybody I'm not seeing or additional people with you, let me know, please. Mike, it's up to you.
Okay, we'll just welcome everyone to the, the, the special meeting that we called tonight. The last week, week and a half, we've had some improvements, I feel, with this whole essential service, and I wanted to bring everyone together tonight. We do like, we would like to meet with the Board of Supervisors in the next two weeks to try to bring in a new motion, well, motion that could be an amendment. And I just want to bring everyone together to talk about some of the additions and deletions to the new bylaws that we've drafted for the new committee that's, that's moving forward. So with that, is anyone here that? So, last meeting, we have the agenda, is there an approval for that?
No, I think I just took this from another one, approved this agenda.
Okay. So, new business right now, discussion and vote on the draft and bylaws with suggestions by the Board of Supervisors on July 5. Everyone should have a copy of that. It's moving it from an advisory committee to an advisory council. So, there were, as, as you can see, as you move through your, your information, there are some additions and deletions that you'll see in blue and yellow. Those are, are some suggestions that the Board of Supervisors wanted to see different or something that is a discussion here with the group, whether you're okay with it, whether we need to change things or whatnot. So, this is what in blue is what the Board of Supervisors were looking at as additions and/or deletions.
And I sent out, I'm not sure everybody got it, but Donnie Hobbs' mayor had some suggestions that he would like added too, so if anybody did not get that, but you guys can have that to look at while you're reviewing this. Uh, yes.
Does he want to speak on behalf of his?
Donnie, you want to unmute and speak on behalf of yours?
Uh, sure, uh, so the things that I had put on there was just more about the timeline for the meetings, of course. I know many of us are quite busy, so getting packets of information to prepare for the meeting and review ahead of time is really important and like expedites the actual meeting quite a bit, so that's why I suggested we put in there a paragraph stating when those council packets with agendas and everything would be sent. I, I just threw in six days prior. I'd certainly be open to some other amount of days, but I, I feel like six is probably the minimum that would be helpful for that, just so you have time to look over everything and prepare for the meeting. And that would just be adding to section H, I guess it was.
So, would you like a specific day of the week? The first part of the month, second part, what works for you, or what suggestion?
Uh, well, for that particular thing, it's just a certain number of days ahead of whenever we have a meeting that we would get all of the material. As far as setting the meetings, which was the next item I had, had mentioned, was five o'clock is pretty early for those of us that have day jobs. Uh, so it's oftentimes difficult to get to moving at five o'clock. But maybe this is the case with everybody else, and, and I don't know if we even want to set the time for that and a day for the actual regular meetings, or whether that's just set like I mentioned in here, that we could just specify that that is set and sent out to everybody a minimal of thirty days in advance. If we just, did just set that it's the Thursday of those months, that's fine too, I, I don't know what works with everybody.
Six P M?
Can I suggest something real quick? Why don't we just start working through this and we'll run into what Donnie's talking about then?
We're, we're gonna fix the agenda tonight, so.
Right, but if, if he has a question, we'll go. And I understand that, but we're already off the agenda because we're kind of cherry picking here what we're gonna hit real quick. And no offense, Donnie, but we're eventually gonna get to this as we work through bylaws, carry on, all right?
Well, absolutely, yeah, yeah, I mean, they're part of the bylaws, these are just items that I had picked out of the bylaws that I particularly wanted to just get a few things, thoughts out there ahead of time, so people could think about a little bit. It does certainly make sense to me to just, and I assumed regarding the agenda item, that's what we would do is just work through this, those items that were highlighted and eventually get to the sections that should be dealt with.
Yeah, and, and I know you were highlighting with some suggestions that you wanted to make, so I guess with Eric's suggestion, we'll go through the bylaws, paragraph by paragraph, and we can make those suggestions and deletions, additions, whatever it is, as we go through, so. Will that work for you?
It's good for me. Good for others.
Mike, can I, um, just, Kim, whoever is a five one five three seven oh three one nine three phone number, tell me their name, please? I haven't sent these names much yet before, so.
I'm trying to see if that might be sending. I don't think she was gonna be available.
Her name showed up a minute ago, and then now I just have a phone number.
Three seven oh three one nine three?
Yep.
Should be sending.
Should be sending, okay, all right.
So, let's, let's just go through the bylaws then. Um, you all have a copy of it, we're gonna go through it page by page. Like I said, if there's any blue or yellow, that's the suggestion and or deletions. Um, so let's go through it one by one, article one, anyone have any suggestions with that? Pretty quick reading, article two.
I'll just let you know that these one through six came out of Senate File six fifteen as what this council would be responsible for doing.
You're right.
Might have been a long sentence that I shortened in the.
Article three.
I think that was where there was confusion.
Right, the, the phrase, you know, is Calhoun County M S A C shall act on behalf of and as the official advisor to the county board of supervisors. Um, there was some discussion at the supervisors' meeting on that language shall act on behalf of. And it was a concern that this, the advisory council would not be making any decisions and acting on their own behalf, but they are acting on behalf of the Board of Supervisors. Because this is an advisory council, which makes recommendations to the Board of Supervisors, and the Board of Supervisors may then come back and ask you to do something, so then you're acting on their behalf. But the, the confusion or the discussion centered on that this does not give the advisory council authority to act independently. And if, if everybody's understanding of that, then it really doesn't need, you know, to be changed. And I've been, you know, this afternoon was trying to figure out a better way to say it, and I can't really, haven't really thought of anything.
I took that language from a template from the Bureau of E M S, one of their strategic planning guides.
Yeah, and it's, it's the same language that is in the advisory committee bylaws, and so it's, it's really not a big change.
I was just wondering, could that part that says shall act on behalf of actually just get moved down underneath the general functions of the committee as a number, and then put it on her when approved by the Board of Supervisors that this committee shall act on behalf of the Board of Supervisors?
Which section are you talking about, Scott?
That article three, the part you just read, the shall act on behalf of.
Yeah.
And then you go right down, it says general functions of the committee.
Okay.
If we put it in there as one of the numbers, like number five, it say that with authority of the Board of Supervisors that they shall act on behalf of the Board of Supervisors. That way it comes out of there, and then it basically just states that this is the official advisor to so that there's no confusion on that.
I suppose it could, but I wouldn't word it the way you said it.
Yeah.
Calhoun County M S A C shall act as the official advisor to, and then the number five. But you've got number two in there that shall recommend to the Board of Supervis-, no, that's just the findings, right?
Yeah, yeah, so it, it would have to be a number five or inserted in there someplace else if you want, if there's. I wouldn't word it the same way Scott worded it, but.
So that's something we can work on, Scott?
Sure.
Okay. So, section B, Dan, yes, I just, the question I have is just what was the criteria for who is considered voting and non-voting?
I, when I was E M A and nine, E nine one one, when we had tax funds come in, there was a big thing put out by the state and the commissions at the state level group that said that when you are working with like surcharge money or tax dollars, the people voting on that usage needs to be the elected official. So, for anything that has to do with asking for the amount you want taxed, how you want it dispersed amongst the group, and remember, you're, you're just, just like the E M A and nine one one, you're sending it to the Board of Supervisors for the final decision. That's what happens with that. The other things with the planning, what kind of plan you want to put together and stuff like that is through Senate File six fifteen, it said that this council will work with service directors from the, the county. And so we put in those service directors. I can't, as EMS coordinator, vote because I didn't vote on the other one, so I have to designate, which would be Luke for that service director role. Then you've got Stephanie and, and Jay Anderson for Laurville. That's where those came in, and the physician medical director, and that was from the template from the original thing that we utilized. And then we need the subject matter experts for anything that has to do with the, the transport and interacting with certain agencies in the county to assist, but.
But since this is an advisory committee, Tina, help me out here. Does it have to be an elected member, or can the mayor just say?
Well, and that's, that's a question that I have, is that I would think that if, if I were one of these designated people, and then I would have to remember my voting member on this subject and not a voting member on that subject. And I really, because it is an advisory council, everyone, in my mind anyway, should have the same seat at the table. Even if you're voting on, you know, you're not voting on the final say of how money is going to be spent. You are making a decision to make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors how money is to be spent. And so.
I had the same, the same question, because, uh, I mean, you're referencing the E nine one one and emergency management. Those do not answer to the Board of Supervisors unless I'm incorrect on that. We set our own budget, it's published separately, so that is elected officials that are on that to do that, because we don't recommend anything to the Board of Supervisors, they don't have any say.
Donnie, the E M A receives a grant.
If we're not. Yeah, right, I'm sorry, yeah, it's a E nine one one, basically, it's a lot.
Yeah, because E M A receives grant money, and then the supervisors approve the fifty-five thousand dollars that we get. And I said that we always get other tax money coming into the supervisors that we give out to other organizations that are elected officials. We've got our fair board, our museum, you name it, I can just keep your whole pile list, it is tax money that goes out, and they're not elected officials that vote on these things.
So, this would be just like that, where we're asking the Board of Supervisors for a budget. We might recommend a budget to it, just like any other department, but we aren't actually making the decision on the money.
I gave Tina chapter twenty-nine C, uh, there's a section in there, she's looking at it.
Well, she's doing that just under number two, under the hospital, instead of, I mean, we'd like to have a E R manager or designate.
Okay.
Because Laura, I mean, she's on the poll, but, you know, I guarantee that.
She was working in there, yeah.
Makes sense, just from our standpoint, I mean.
And representing the hospital, I mean, so anything that a hospital wants brought for them, that would be the person.
So Laura's the go-to, and then if she can make it, then there's.
I didn't put names, it's just the E R manager that's usually interacts with more, but we could add or designate him as other people. I don't vote, so unless you guys don't agree with that.
So, moving forward with that, um, we have a resignation with the fire service, which is Jason McKinney. And that would be two B, and we have the board, chief of board from Pomeroy, that said he would step into that role. But he really wouldn't have any objections to that.
Well, I, I think each entity gets to name their own.
Right.
Representative on the, on this. So, I, I, you know, I don't think anybody can vote no, like, that person can't be on here.
I'm just saying that Jason wants to step down, Dan DeWors, that he tonight would step in on that role.
I'm not sure this is the same thing.
Okay.
Okay, um, I, you know, I see where you're coming from, but I don't, I'm not sure it's the same thing.
Okay, I just know it was talking with the tax funds from this, and that's.
Yeah.
That subsection, so.
And, and it's also, you know, because that, there's a difference between council and committee.
Okay.
And that's a commission, and the way that they're formed makes it, gives them different authority, so.
I just know when I was, and I don't know if it was the nine one one board that, at the state level that said that, yeah, or the, the emergency management group at the state, so.
Yeah, so.
If you guys want to change that, that is fine.
Yeah, I would rather, you know, just from a legal standpoint, and just making the operation of, of the advisory council a little bit easier, just have everybody have the same voting authority.
And there was one other thing under section B, one, one B. It said the service director doesn't need each of the ambulance services, I mean, we don't have an ambulance service, we are Calvin County Lake City.
But there's more going on currently.
Right, but what I'm saying is Lake City doesn't.
Right, yeah.
So I'm losing a voting member here.
Well.
You see where I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah. But under, you know, the way that the, this committee operated before, it was the same, I remember from each ambulance service program.
And it, but, once again, one is, I'm, I'm not the Lake City service.
Yeah.
So, am I off base here? Because I know Barnabille still operates, and Laurville is Manson's. Yeah, but as far as that, I'm sure it operates their own independent service. Or still has just a crew dedicated.
So, just for clarification, losing a vote from what?
As a, as a voting member of this council.
Okay. What, what was the, what was the voting member that you're losing?
Well, the fact that we, Barnabille has not only a mayor or designate, they also have somebody from the service on the council, does that make sense?
Yeah, but Rockwell City and Manson are in the same vote as Lake City.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah, so I did, that's why I brought it up.
Well, so could it be where each, where the ambulance located, so means they could also have a voting? The whole service is gonna be.
But the location right now of where ambulances are is, is based on either agreements with the county or being named as affiliates, and so it's still, I, I don't think just the location of an ambulance in your town should give you a vote, is what I'm saying, okay?
Carrie, we talked Tuesday about that suggested list for the E M S advisory council for the original one. And you said you had a copy of that, you had that with you to read off what the original list was?
I guess that's what worked, I forgot, it's like, who represents each town then?
Okay, this, this is the, um, the bylaws as they last existed under the E M S advisory committee. And it says, committee members will attempt to consist of seventeen total members to include one EMS physician, medical director, a member from each of the ambulance service programs, a member of the firefighter association, a member of law enforcement, a communication center representative, county board of supervisors, board of health, human resource advisory, emergency management nine one one board, hospital administration, hospital emergency department supervisor, layperson, consumer, EMS educator, Calhoun County EMS coordinator. So, the, those are the listed members that previously made up the committee.
And we are in the process of revising that, we added a second mayor at the time, because we wanted another elected official from the northern half. E M A doesn't really participate, um, we've got a lot of his other meetings, so. But we still wanted to include him, we had a tyranny coming from the nine one one board. Lori was on as the layperson, I think a layperson at the time, so. But we never got to a point of changing it, because it still said the board of health in that, and we were in the process. Started having some, yeah, we started having some other things come into the, so. So.
I, I think that this is a very valid point, I mean, and it's a tricky thing to answer, I mean, to be fair to everybody, because the services themselves should all be involved, but in the same way you want all the communities involved. So, it just happens that two of our communities have a service, so they end up getting two representatives on the, on the board. So, to rectify that, then do you add a representative from the other communities that is somehow involved in EMS, or do you decrease the other ones and their voting membership? Which, I mean, you still want the community involved as well as the service itself involved.
Honey, this is where B and C come in, do, just combine the two, the mayor or designate. Does that make sense, Donnie?
It, it does, but then it, it ends up not having the, the service director, possibly the service director involved in those, I mean, I
was that in Senate File six fifteen? Senate File six fifteen said work with the local ambulance services.
Yeah, it does.
Um, Lake City has a representative from Stewart Memorial, so that's the second person.
But that's on the original. Right?
Well, but if you guys are voting that these non-voting members also are voting members, then that would be two votes for the Lake City area.
And, and I'm not, I'm not playing blue against red here, Carrie, don't get me wrong.
No, no, I just.
Because he knows what I'm talking about. I, I, I'm just saying, I think it ought to be an even fifty-fifty split, just like the Senate did. All right, you know, an equal balance, I, I don't think a community should get two votes as, like, City who's part of Calvin County EMS just gets one.
So, there's nothing stopping from, stopping Pomeroy from starting an ambulance service, and then you're exactly right, essentially creating a seat for themselves.
Yes.
But Manson only has one. Ryan, it only has one.
Yeah, yeah.
Ryan only has one.
In Rockwell City and Vance.
Yeah, only have one.
That's what I'm saying, so essentially Laurville, Barnabille.
This is following Senate File six fifteen.
Again, and do we want on one C, it says the mayor designate from each city and county. I think we should put the word incorporated.
Somebody else had mentioned that today, so.
Because, you know, some of our, our towns are getting so small that they may become unincorporated.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess you're the attorney on this, but I think when you become unincorporated, you're not a city anymore.
Well, but you still may access any, and if you've already been given a seat at the table, are you gonna give it up?
I think you'd have to, if you're, if you want to incorporate, I think you would have to, you're not, you're not a city. I mean, you don't have, you're not incorporated as a city, or whether you want to be or not, you're not.
Well.
But, but I mean.
You and I understand that, Donnie.
Like I said.
You and I understand that.
The only other thing I want to, I mean, for Stewart Memorial, we may be in Lake City, but we represent all the communities, I mean, we don't just serve Lake City members. We, we serve the county and outside of the county as well, so I mean, the decisions that we'd be making that has to be looked at more globally than just Lake City, as much as everybody think that's all the only reason we're looking at it.
That's the same thing with the, the service directors, they're representing the ambulance, not the city.
That, that's really true, and not that I don't want to give up going to a meeting, believe me, I go to enough meetings, but to have the city itself represented as well as the service representative, because Steph and I bring completely different perspectives, because she's looking out for the service and how we incorporate into it, and I'm looking out for the city and how the community is incorporated into this. I, I, I don't know how to resolve the issue that it appears like Laurville and Barnabille get two votes, and everybody else only gets one.
And as far as Rockwell City, I mean, they've got, the mayor has the vote, Luke represents the ambulance service, because he lives in Jefferson, so he's certainly not representing Rockwell City. So, yeah, just like Donnie said, we're we've got city representatives, we've got service representatives, different perspectives, we've got a hospital representative. So, the changes, the voting portion was under section G. So, that would be item five, and just remove that.
I mean, cancel that.
Or table it until we get there.
Well, the only, yeah, the only reason why I brought it up is because you have, you know, section B one and section B two, which you know, separates the, the two blocks of people, and so you need to take out number two and just make everybody number one.
What does the group?
I'm okay with it. Since I've been beating the ass here.
You gotta have the opposition voice, so we don't get anywhere.
Yeah, yeah, just, yeah, just section B with no one, yeah, the section B.
The next one has some highlights, which is section B, terms of council members. It's recommended that the sitting members stay on with no expiring terms. Is that something that the council wants to continue with, or do you want a term limits?
With some of the positions, there might be natural term limits, you know, when the mayors are no longer mayors, and so their positions are changed and, and stuff like that. So, that might be a natural change in that particular membership, but sometimes you don't want to put term limits, because then you limit the involvement of people who are really interested in the topic.
And if they're appointed by their. And if they're appointed by their. Association or something like that, that would be the association to decide.
I, I would agree. That would be my recommendation.
So I'm stuck in my role.
You're stuck in your role.
What is your role, Mike?
I guess that would be the question with this being a whole new council, or as, why would you automatically assume? Roles that were in a previous, if that's being disbanded.
I guess, yeah, because I mean, like, how do you, like, if there's somebody else in law enforcement that would want to. The seat they're taking that night, if there's somebody that would want to, how do they get in that seat? Or somebody inspired, they've worked. They've got seats open now. How does the public know it's open? What does somebody that want to be there?
Yeah, well.
It's, it. Section or item one says each position member will be appointed by his or her elected status or affiliation and shall remain on. Until they are no longer able to fulfill their responsibilities, they're no longer in that position. It doesn't say that Mike is here.
For life.
For life, it is. It would be up to the law enforcement group to say that they want somebody else to do it, and the same with fire and um. The service directors, so services.
Well, there, there's a Calhoun County Law Enforcement Association, and so the association should be the one that appoints the membership to the advisory council.
I think this big one was, we added the um, by his or her elected status or affiliation to it. And then the question, do we want terms? Yeah, that's something that.
Well, I, I think it's important that Mike stays where he's at right now, and, and till at least the new board convenes. Because to be honest, we, we, we have to have a president right now, if we're going to continue to.
That would be section A, yes.
Under the next section.
Under article four, as officers. But as far as membership, as long as the, you know, the Law Enforcement Association for Calhoun County. Appoints Mike, then Mike's on this position. Uh, you know. When they have their next meeting, if they decide they want to appoint someone else to that position and that person's willing to accept, then Mike would step down.
So then you don't need term limits, basically what I said.
I wouldn't think so. Not, not for membership, maybe officers, you might need term limits, but not necessarily for membership.
So in regards to me. I was all told that I was going to be the chairman on January twenty-second and twenty-eleven. I know that day, because that's the day my dad died. And I was elected as the chairman only because I wasn't present.
Moving forward.
You're gonna put presence required.
Exactly. So I've been the chairman ever since that day. I'm happy to represent this group. I really am. You can bring a lot to the table. Law enforcement wise, anyone else in the county? Dan?
Well, to be honest, that's, that's why he's here. So.
Yeah.
I, I've got a big best of them post in this, probably more from. Rather than a law enforcement perspective. But quite frankly, as the law enforcement representative. You know, my time is relatively short, will be short-lived in the law enforcement community, so.
Jerk.
I, I, I am very interested in, on the board or not. I'm, you know, if I see something I don't like, I'm going to be talking to the people and.
So what's your next county law enforcement meeting?
July twenty-third.
I mean, because I think for these bylaws, we just say a member from it, and we're not going to say do it or anything.
Yes, July twenty-third.
Yes.
That's a training on the twenty.
Training, yeah. Last Tuesday in July, we're actually doing a law date, so.
Um, I think at the board of supervisors meeting for the next. For the officers, it was thought maybe at the first initial meeting. That should be revoted on.
Yes.
And we don't have secretaries, so that.
What, then easily, is it, when officer positions are created, didn't care. I, I didn't see anything.
It's chair, vice chair, and secretary.
There are three vote at the first. I think, yeah, and what happens is, Carrie, you and the EMS coordinator just carry the meeting to someone who's voted president.
It would make sense on the officers to say that they are voted on on a regular basis, whether it's yearly or bi-yearly or.
Right. Most organizations, you know, they, you know, just like we have a general election, you know, as a community and as a nation. You know, most organizations will say officers are elected in this, you know, the organizational meeting, so the first meeting of the year.
You know, the discussion. Article four, section A, there was, there was an adjustment there about. Section B qualifications.
We, we take it out for voting, since everybody's a. We're not making that distinction anymore.
Okay, so there's the election of officers at the first council meeting.
So. What, but what are you designating as your first council meeting, you know?
So the first initial. I don't know. Once the bylaws are passed, does that set the council? And so then we would.
Think so.
We get into section H as we go down here. The lines, the council meetings, February, May, August, November, five. So ideally, if we, I got this, then the next meeting will be August.
And so August.
We will, that would be a regular meeting. We're probably are going to have some other meetings, because we have things that we have to get done.
So would you be designating August then as your annual elections too? Or we, are you going to do that a different month?
Yeah, if you're okay with the language here, then yeah, that would be the next one.
Okay.
For the, the regular election of officers, wouldn't that make sense to be the first meeting of each year? Since you would have newly elected officials joining the committee at that time.
We, we, we can do that if we. If we meet in August, I think we could refresh what we're doing now. And then we can make that a rule that the first of every year, if that's what we, we can do.
So February meeting of each year.
Yep.
If, if you guys agree.
And designate February as, as an organizational meeting, so that.
That's mentions that this election shall be held by secret ballot. Is there some reason for that? Most of these things we just do oral.
That was language from the state's template back in two thousand and two-ish.
And I don't know how other people feel like it. I feel like I'm motioning second and voting on orally is sufficient.
I, I think if, if you, if it comes to a point in time where. You take out the secret ballot, but leave a provision in that it can be requested.
The next one is section I, which is majority vote. There was, there was some. Uh, changes in that about voting in attendance.
Where are you at?
Section I.
How did you get not get?
Am I? Well, I was at H, and then we were talking about council meetings, so.
We're going back. Can you go back?
Well, no, that's where the secret ballot was, so I had to.
So go back to D?
So that doesn't need to be there. It needs to be.
And we need to add secretary to section D, because it only has chairperson and vice chairperson.
Years.
Well, it was annually.
We've been talking about annually.
Thank you, it seems.
I have a question. Yes, team. Under two and three, when there's a vacancy of the vice chair that's appointed by a chairperson and a vacancy by the secretary. That's appointed by the chairperson. Are these people acting in that role for the meeting? Or are they appointed until an election is held?
Well, it'd be the next regular scheduled council meeting that will be filled by vote.
So they're acting in that until that next meeting.
So how does it, how do I say that? We shall be appointed by the, to act until the next or.
To act in that capacity until the next meeting. This is just stylistically, um, preside over council meetings is different from conducting. And I think a chairperson should conduct the meeting. And if someone disagrees with me, that's fine too.
Conduct over or conduct the council?
Shall conduct council meetings. Because presiding over is just, you know, like following the robust rules of order and stuff like that. But if you're conducting the meeting, you're actually leading it. In my mind, anyway.
Are you of sound mind today?
This is the most focused I've been today.
Okay.
Go again to.
Did I miss, am I missing this file? Who sets the agenda today?
It's not addressed in here. I brought it up that it should be addressed. I hadn't seen where it was addressed, maybe under section H, that would be added.
Well, that's, that's special. Yeah, I, for the regular meeting, I mean, the EMS coordinator and the president set the agenda.
You could certainly add, and there's something about uh, that anybody who has items to be on the agenda to be submitted to those people. By so many days ahead of the meeting.
But there, there's nothing wording in it actually who sets.
Duties it's going to be.
Yeah, exactly.
So the chairperson. That's the agenda. Does the mayor set the agenda either?
Well, the mayor and the, and the city manager.
So.
They do enjoy.
The chair and the EMS coordinator.
If that works for everything.
And then, then whoever.
And this word Donnie's language. If you want something, then let somebody know.
And then number three, if I wanted, have a special meeting, I have to have a three-day notice, number three.
It might want more than that, if it could be. I mean, three days, pretty short notice.
Well. Yeah, but it might be an issue that needs to be addressed quickly, so.
Minimum of three days or straight development.
Yeah, it says that, you know, it's recommended seventy-two hours, so.
Section I, I'm enjoying it. There was a adjustment there.
Yeah, that's five, that was one of those things that Donnie was.
I mean, whatever works.
I think we need to go back to G, though. Because.
I, I, I'm open. Like I say, the, the E nine-one-one ones or the, these meetings, we usually have these at six-thirty or seven. I mean, six-thirty seems like a particularly reasonable time to me. Uh, I don't know what other people think.
Yeah, yeah, they, well.
Scott, when do you finish planting corn?
Hopefully before the May one. I missed when I'm coming.
I, I, I'm in the same boat, so I'm like, when do you quit? Five o'clock, six, six-thirty, seven? Dark?
When the field's too wet.
When it's seven, it's six-thirty. Are you okay with that, Scott?
Yeah.
Okay, it's after five o'clock, because it's five o'clock somewhere, so.
Can we back up to section G, because we went pretty quick over that?
Sure.
What is, um, you know, the board of supervisors has a representative on this advisory council. And number three says they vote only in event of a tie.
That came out of. I believe that came out of the um, EMS strategic plan. That's not it. Um. And it was in that template, and that's, I think it's probably in that one too.
But if we go back. We go back, everybody being a voting member.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with it. I'm just telling you where I got it from.
Yeah, so it's inconsistent if, if everybody's voting, so.
So we just delete three of, totally? And number one. Yeah, I, each council member shall be entitled to one vote. Uh, the chairperson retains their vote. Everybody okay with that? Um, there was a question about phone-in, so that one-on-four with no absentee ballots are allowed.
But it's your definition of attendance. If, if, if you don't have. Yeah, so if, if, like this meeting, you set up the Zoom, so these people are in attendance, even though they're not physically here. An absentee ballot to me is, you're not here, you're not participating, but you're still voting. And, and then we can't have that. That's not recommended.
So, member present or?
Participating.
By electronic means.
If you want to further define it, that would be okay. But technology changes all the time.
So it's at that point, when you mailed out.
No, because you're not participating. You are.
And then. Five goes away.
Yeah.
Okay, so get rid of five. Quarterly during the months of February, May, August, and November, still okay, change it to six thirty.
Um, do we, I'm going to putting something here about how does, like, the specific day? That, the, during those months, I mean, is the board just going to set that? At the, at their meeting, what, what day their next meeting's going to be, or is that going to be a set day of the month? The chair is going to send that out in advance. I believe it was a Wednesday.
I think it was the fourth Wednesday, but.
So, Donnie, when is your council meetings? The first, second Tuesday of every month?
Correct.
From Lake City.
Person, person during the day.
You can do a Wednesday.
Okay, ambulance meets on. Well, we are the second Monday, second Monday. The Mondays are out, Tuesdays are out, Wednesdays seem to work.
So the second Wednesday of every month.
It was the last one.
Last one.
Important to be churches. There's church activities usually are on Wednesday nights, as far as what you call that. I mean, if anybody's involved with that, not saying that there.
Um, what time do they usually get out?
It depends on what it is.
So again, you're gonna have a conflict. Everybody on any day, so.
And that might be.
If it was the fourth Wednesday, that's what it was.
Yeah, that would be.
Fourth Wednesday and fourth Thursday.
Fourth Wednesday. And then what about Donnie's stuff about the council packets and stuff? Everybody okay to add that into section eight?
Six days is a long time. City Council, we, we need to be forty-eight hours. Six days, there's a lot gonna happen in six days.
Okay.
Well, I can't, I don't know what, what we'll be looking at, it's gonna happen in those days.
Donnie, reverse response.
If you got seven days for the meetings. And you.
Yes.
You're gonna see the agenda of seventy-two hours.
If it's something lengthy, things that occurs, you would be not with the core. So if there was something to be amended or to look at, it would be, there's a need to be writing that if it's something in length.
Three days prior before the meeting.
You wanna say three days or seventy-two hours?
Seventy-two. That goes along with the safe, the language that's already in there.
So can I move to I now, or does anybody have anything else on the backup?
Well, you know, mine.
I know, I know. Section I, majority vote, there is some additions there and deletions. Any comments?
It was felt at the board supervisor meeting that we should set a minimum number in order to.
Have quorum.
Have quorum and, and pass on decisions, vote on decision. I know when we did this and we ran into harvest and farming issues and, and other summer vacations and stuff. We had a hard time getting, you know, five people in, but I think we've got a lot of people here that have a lot of other responsibilities, and I agree, I think we need to make sure that we set a quorum so that these meetings are not.
So they are important.
Yes, thank you.
So what's the quorum?
So what's the? Hopefully it's one more than half, isn't it? Of the seventeen people who are.
Yeah, you, I don't know, but you have to define it because it depends on how many members, if you have fifteen on it, that changes the number and you go seventeen.
Right, because the number could potentially increase or decrease, depends on if you get, if you go with.
Majority vote is kind of one vote greater than fifty percent.
And majority vote and quorum. You had to have quorum in order to have the vote.
Quorum.
So that was the question for supervisors, one more half, so.
And it's not, and the quorum is not those in attendance, you need to define quorum as being members of the council.
Do I need a special section for quorum?
Yes. Yeah, I would make a special.
You don't have quorum, you can't vote on.
You can't do any business.
Yeah.
That was a question we had at board supervisors, is how do we define, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
That'd be a non-section.
Yeah, no, one, one more.
That. Or participating.
Okay.
So like, certain times if somebody can be on the little meeting or phone, they're participating in the meeting, should have a vote.
Yeah.
That would be considered quorum. So I don't know, you just define the phone call only.
Yes, we have done meetings. So they are participating.
The members, so consider like there was a layperson on there.
That was like, how it's made, the previous committee was made up.
That, that positions.
It wasn't listed on the new, on the proposed.
We added all the mayors so that all the council. I didn't think we wanted a whole big group.
Well, and how would you recruit that layperson?
Yeah.
We had trouble getting it, I tell you.
Is that position is not on the votes?
But going back to that, so like what your position, Carrie, you're listed on one and two, so just be for yours. The A would go away and just go to the B, where, where am I? In section B and.
Clarback front.
For your members.
Membership.
In case the service director is the county EMS coordinator or designated need will do that, I still don't think. Cause you're, that you're on number two, too, you're fun A. Yeah, but it says that this B would be the designate. I wasn't going to vote, I don't know that I still should.
Well, you, you're in Disney.
Yeah, exactly, so. But we changed two to be in a voting number now.
Yeah. So.
So I'm either B or I'm either.
That's why, that's what I was asking.
What technically is.
Right. What I would. You know, in, in city government, county government, you know, you have the city clerk, the county auditor as kind of the person that's wrangling everybody together to do things and that, and that's what I see your role as on the advisory council, not necessarily as a voting member.
Exactly.
So you would need to be taken off the list as members and just, you would be an ad hoc member.
Okay, yep. Sorry, you're the service director, please sign me, not already sign, right? On service director or designate for me to the ambulance service program. So I, I could either function as a service director, but I'd still just have the one vote or do it that and have no vote. Or do now.
The, at her position as EMS coordinator would be an ad hoc member.
Yeah, yeah.
So under two A, the cross off.
That cross off in.
Yeah.
Yeah. I do know that in the past, Paul doesn't feel comfortable being a voting member. He just feels like he's here to give information. So.
And if he decides not to vote, he doesn't vote.
Yeah. There's a lot of mark comments.
It's a good thing you're recording it, right?
Hope I can read it tomorrow. Okay.
So anyone else have any additions or suggestions of what we've talked about so far?
Clarification for me. Um, there was that highlight, you want to allow votes by phone, do I need to have that specifically in there since we have participating in that other spot? No, okay.
So, amendment procedure, that's pretty self-explanatory. And then the rest of it, five, six, and seven. Anyone have any questions with the language on that?
The only question I have on is conflict of interest, it's, everybody has conflict of interest because they're voting on the same thing.
Stakeholders.
Yeah, how do you, everybody's app, I mean. Well, I have, I don't, I just don't know what, where you would say that. I would be out of it because.
Cause we would know what your conflict was gonna be.
And we're all talking about.
Well, I, I, I think.
I guess that's what I'm just saying, what would it be, I'm trying.
The conflict I would see would be if the advisory council makes a decision that EMS needs to purchase some type of new equipment. And you are invested in the company that's presented the lowest bid. That would be a conflict.
Correct. That way, but.
Yeah. Otherwise.
Yeah, because all the decisions being made here are.
Or your membership association, whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, everybody's vote, I mean.
So as long as you don't have a personal.
Right.
Interest in it is.
That's more or less what I think has to be. Personal conflict of interest.
Yeah.
You have a discussion with the bylaws. Anyone online have any discussion with the bylaws?
I think this has been good productive discussion.
Then we will move on to, to be, which is discussion and vote, recommendations to present the Calum County Board of Supervisors regarding the motion that affected August thirty. That follows back to in your camp, your, 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 or the motion that was aimed for.
All right, so, um, just to clarify, the board of supervisors asked this group, and now that we have identified who's gonna be on the group and everything like that, and we'll get that uh, typed up and present to the board of supervisors, correct?
Probably should send it out to the group to make sure it says, yeah, what we intended it to say.
What they want this group to do as part of the purpose is to recommend fiscal responsibility and some of these other things to the board of supervisors. And Carl actually suggested that this group help with the decision that is coming with the motion that Scott Jacobs made in March.
March.
That was pushed back to, um, uh, July thirty-first. So it's coming up and, um, there were some things that, that need to be decided by your group, this group. Um, Mikey, sorry, I just wanted to say where that came from.
Right, and, and my suggestion, we're meeting today, and my, my thoughts in two weeks, meeting with the board of supervisors again. Um, I'm asking for an amendment to the original motion to reflect what we're doing today and through the future. And that we're gonna need a little bit more time and statistics to show that what we're doing is working budgetarily. And that everyone is on the same page with that as far as how it's working. So that was my suggestion to the board of supervisors and to this group. Uh, that'll be two weeks from.
Last Tuesday.
Last Tuesday.
And the real probably part of that motion that is, uh, the supervisors is looking at is not necessarily where the ambulances are placed. They want that to go into effect, but the controversy is the structure of the shifts. You know, are the shifts twenty-four hour shifts at full pay, are they twenty-four hour shifts at, you know, a reduction in pay certain times of the day, sleep time? Um, and so, um. And the way that this kind of all started was the department was very short and couldn't. You know, they didn't have enough people. And so they developed a plan to hire new people that changed the structure of the shifts. It allowed twelve-hour shifts and twenty-four hour shifts to coexist. It created a straight, the same pay for the full twenty-four hours around the clock. And as a consequence of that, um, there's a lot of overtime. Until we got people hired and trained and put in the right positions. And that's kind of where the department is at right now. But because they have all these new people going through orientation, still don't have a true picture of what the hit is gonna be on the budget. And whether or not enough money was budgeted for this department to be fully staffed and to do the things that they need to do around the clock. And so the motion that was proposed was that the structure would change from a straight pay twenty-four hours to pay, uh, for sixteen hours of the day. And then another level of pay for eight hours called sleep time. And if that sleep time was interrupted to where the, the people didn't get at least five hours of sleep, then they would still get the straight pay. And there's also discussions about how overtime can be considered. So that's, that's why we're here talking about it tonight.
My original budget, I did not dream that I would get as many people as we did that wanted to work full-time for us. And I'm happy to say that we have enough people full-time to cover two ambulances. Okay, twenty-four hours, seven days a week. So the recruitment plan worked. Now we just need to work on keeping it. Daylin and Linda developed these spreadsheets. If you want, see, I, I don't have enough for everybody, so if you can share. But it's got the cost per year for the way it currently is, it's got cost per year for, um, paying on the same wage for the full twenty-four hours, but the sleep time is not counted towards overtime. Um, unless they actually go out on a call, there is a spreadsheet for duty call at half pay for those eight hours. There's one for on-call, which is what the motion says. So we, and Scott has made it known that he did not mean on-call, he meant the half pay. So that would have to be amended anyway, but, so I went ahead and put the on-call. Daylin came up with the thought process of the forty-eight ninety-six rotation so that everybody knows where they're working from now on. So that's in here, we added that one, um, today or yesterday. And then there's one, if you left them at the current, no. You didn't give them the six percent raise that the rest of the county did, but left the same structure. So those are just some, uh, the different plans, and Daylin can say more. And then he's got, um, this that says what it would look like to the individuals.
So. You guys follow how he's cheaper laid out, how it shows in the top where it highlighted on the front page, it says overtime. Uh, that is currently the current pay scale, so we work two days a week, forty hours of it. This is based off a two-week thing, so this is every pay period, so you're gonna see eighty hours in there, and then you're gonna see sixteen hours of overtime. So this top one is how we are currently doing things. And then you can flip it over to the back of it, and it's gonna show you about what the cost of that is going to be for a period and what it's gonna cost for their total year. When you go to the front of the next one, you've got duty call and then a straight pay. So you, you still work in a forty-eight hour shift, you're gonna get a straight pay even after forty hours, and you will not receive overtime until you work forty-eight hours in one second. How that one kind of works out. The next one would be. It was a little different, but duty call half day, which is the one that if we change the language of what Scott has put in there on the on-call, this would be the kind of thing that he was thinking that that would take effect for like for August first. After eleven o'clock at night, you would be getting paid half of your normal wage. So for those that are making twenty dollars an hour, I'd say they'd be cut down to ten, unless they are called out in the middle of the night. And then there, when they don't get five consecutive hours of sleep, then they got five consecutive hours of sleep, it would stay at this rate, but if they did not, then it would go into.
Like collaborative or total, not consecutive. It depends on how it is set up. Fair Labor Standards says it does not have to be consecutive, but it is very hard to, as you know, get back to sleep after a call, so, um, it depends on how the board would word it.
So that would be.
And that would be a suggestion.
So. So then you got that one, uh, the next one's on-call. And our policy, the procedures, it shows that states that our on-call rate is currently two fifty an hour, so once eleven o'clock at night hits and you go to sleep, they will currently be getting a pay rate of two dollars and fifty cents unless they get called out, and then their pay will go back to their normal twenty dollars an hour for. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm saying behind the pillars. The next one is, I believe.
I think that's six percent raise.
Okay, so the next one is currently what we're saving at right now, those six percent raise. Like the rest of the county, we would use that and everyone would be in exactly what we've been doing the last. Like the rest of the county, we would use that and everyone would be in exactly what we've been doing the last. How long this has been in from last July, I believe. The next one. Is a same system that I came from when I was working down in Kansas. It's it's based on the forty-eight ninety-six schedule. So what that means is you work forty-eight hours, then you get ninety-six hours off. There is overtime involved in this. But it involves two less staff members than what we currently are at. It allows the people who are here to be paid a little bit more. But you're also required to not work this forty-eight hours. You have to figure it into an average of maybe two hours per week. That's how you do the math. So you're seeing that your overtime is going to be about twenty-four hours per week. As opposed to six weeks. But you have two less staff members. And there's some good and bad about it. You know your schedule, so you don't have the headache of doing scheduling, but then you also have people who just can't make that work at real time. So then there on the back. You have this sheet right here. Can see it. It shows at the very top left, it says current rate pay as of six twenty-two with overtime. Currently paid. And that first number, that sixty-nine thousand dollars is for our longest paramedic who's been on staff. That's what they are currently getting paid. And as of July one, with the six percent raise. Their pay goes up to seventy-three nine twenty-seven. So if you take. Just in that section, if you take, then you move over to. Let's see. The next section in blue, it says a rate of straight pay. So after that eleven o'clock hour, you're still not getting overtime, you're still getting your same straight pay. That would be the new rate. So even after the six percent raise, moving over to that sixty-eight twenty-two. Sixty-eight thousand two hundred and forty dollars. He would not only be losing his six percent raise that he got at the beginning of the year. Okay, be losing an additional one for six, one point six percent. So then that kind of how it correlates on down, how that all follows. Can anyone, everyone kind of track how that works with those arrows? We're doing it. Try to explain it. I like to tell you a lot of times, that's a very bad explaining thing.
You're doing fine.
So then you see the longest paramedic, a new E M T and a new driver because they are paid at different rates. So then you go over to the middle section in the white. You have the first, that first section is the same as in the blue section. Those are all, those numbers are all going to track. What's different is that little section to the right of that, that is a current. Uh, that would be pay with duty call or half pay, which was what would be proposed. And what the Board of Supervisors with the revision, if that goes into effect with what everybody would be getting. So you're moving from. Seventy-three thousand nine hundred twenty-seven to sixty-two thousand five hundred and fifty-three, which in this paramedic's case, that would be a. Take that of fifteen point four percent. And then the E M T would be fifteen point four and so would be new driver. There's a little bit of difference in some of them, but usually they all track pretty well the same. And then the last one is what you would find on the on-call rates. Going eleven o'clock, getting two dollars and fifty cents an hour, you're going to get. Follow the numbers, your employee would be losing about twenty-one point seven percent. Of their wages. And so if you go and you look at the very front page, and let's say. You go look at. You say you look at the Heather Skinner. She is an E M T right now. She is a new E M T. She came just before the July first. And she's got her, this is considering her rate, six percent rate for the year. Then you look at her final numbers, that is eighteen hundred and seventy-four dollars per pay period. And then you go up and we'll just go look at mine. Mine would be currently at twenty-two oh four, Daylon Krigger. If you go and you look at what had been proposed. With the half pay overnight and my pay scale got changed recently because I became medically licensed along. With Brandon and Cynthia, so literally going to practice in his line. If they go to what they say, I will be making nine dollars less an hour than what I was making at the E M T. So that is something to also keep in mind. Other than that, I don't really have anything else. Period. If I'm missing anything or lose brain, it won't be a. I don't think I'm missing much, or if anyone has any questions.
Thank you, Daylin. I think you explained that really well. Um, I just want to put out there that. We were able to recruit with this current structure. Like Tina said, we don't have a full picture of it yet. We don't want to. Kind of lose the ground we gained. We want to be able to retain people so that this group can continue to work on the essential service structure. And make the determinations of where the people are going to go. If if we lose people due to any drastic changes. It's my fear that it's not going to matter what the essential service does because we don't have the people to do it. So that's just my opinion. I just wanted to put it in there. I I agree with Mike. I think let's give it some time. If we can go to the end, at least the end of this calendar year. That will get us through the general election. If we can get the education piece out and get this essential service promoted. And and this group can decide on property tax amounts in lost dollars. And we can come up with several plans on how we want to use that money and show the people will know if we have it. And and then that might answer and help the question of the president.
I have just a couple of things. Like, I love the church, like I'm a church person, um, being a full-time member and supporting you and allowing you to know me. Um, what was the increase when you guys went from going back from the full pay? Like, I know, like, it shows like what the ones would be now, but it doesn't show what it was showing before, before the increase of full-time pay. And then. I asked somebody to figure out on me.
Can you ask the question one more time?
So last year, when you are two years, last year, you guys went for full-time pay, twenty-four hours. From like this kind of shows that like what the statistic was, like going back to that duty call pay. But what was getting paid out before, like what the drastic change was from what we were paying before to what we're paying now as full duty. Like how much, like this is showing what you guys are losing now, but what was that increase? What you guys are giving now, you didn't pay twenty-four hours a verse.
Well, you have to look. You'd have to look at it individually. And there's a lot of overtime in those numbers.
A lot of overtime in the numbers and uh it's a variable because. That overtime is also compounded when we were out within five hours of the night.
Well, and that's like on an average, like.
Probably get the end of the year, fiscal year. That went into.
Nineteen, you know, nineteen through twenty.
Yeah, because it went into effect July of twenty.
So you want, yeah, so you want twenty to twenty-one.
You want twenty to twenty-one, could then then see what. Kind of.
Duty call, I don't know, average amount of report here.
We could do that.
I I'm not even saying you have to pull everybody's like numbers. You can say like there's five minutes at this price, that's fine. Like, it doesn't have to be effect. Say they did this for regulation, that's not a lifetime, a good basic.
So essentially, one-third of my day is now fifty percent more. Minus.
You're making it way too confusing. It's not today. Quite honestly, I appreciate you guys getting this done. Because across the board, like, we needed people to come. Like, one hundred percent, I appreciate it. One of the things that I see is as a service is. I don't mind paying or as a citizen, paying the tax dollars to get this service out there, but yet we don't complete this service. We only see a service when it's a bad day, nine-one-one. I think getting people out there for P R, getting out there, like. Like what Matt did for Amanda Manson for nine-one-one, see from what Eric did for the fun run, just getting out there so people know this is what we're paying for. Like, I've been in EMS for, this is my tenth year. And I was Calum County EMS full-time. I am here now. I got back on the roster. I'm not, I might not be on the call roster, but I respond to plenty a lot in the middle of the night. I'm still not afraid to get my hands dirty. I'm still not afraid to do a shift, but I own a business. I'm in nursing school. I'm busy. But at the same time, it's when I hear from the community members that other members are saying, why does it get paid twenty-four hours? And I just get to go home. That's upsetting to me as a community member that just coming in, doing the shift and being gone. We're here to keep for the communities. So that's where I'm worried about. Okay, as our taxpayers, we're paying for this service. Let's keep, like, let's bring back to the community. So what's going to come back to the community, the service? So what's keep our service members? And that's where I'm trying to.
Well, the ones that are on duty do that public service. The the figure-eight races, the rodeos, the the slag tonight, uh, the triathlons, the the burn. Up in Pomroy, they they do that stuff and we don't get paid for that.
I get that, but like, just like the League City, Eric took the rig out for the fun run. So we didn't have another rig down there. We had it for the rodeo, got asked for the rodeo, but there's events all day long.
Yeah, I only had one crew that day. And I paid people overtime to come in to cover the rodeo. So I I couldn't get them to, well, come in in the morning and then go home.
As these guys being here full-time now, moving forward, that's where I'm like, that P R does.
But that's what I'm saying. They do that when they're on duty because they do all of these events.
And and I think that they're, what Nicole is trying to say is, is, you know, like last spring when the. Ambulance was out at the middle school for the elementary career day, you know. So that, you know, people can see them doing stuff other than taking care of injured and and sick people. You know, that's the type of thing that I think Nicole is.
Yeah, um, I've been working on a debt program for, you know, our county. My name is Cynthia. I've been assigned, um, I kind of actually put myself in the spot to take on um. EMS cadet program, which would involve more P R for our county service. I haven't gotten it all figured out yet, but I'm.
Working on the policies, the protocols. We got to send it to insurance company. We're going to let Tina look at it. But it's similar to the Explorer program. Um, Brandon, so kind of have got into EMS through that.
So.
He's also helping.
Yeah, Carrie approached me with it and Cynthia kind of jumped on it when I had a bunch of stuff going on. So that's how she got involved in it. But. Uh, EMS or our cadet program was actually how I got into EMS. My hometown back in Logan had a cadet program in the fire department. So. I had a couple of friends approached me like, hey, you should join this because I was originally going to go to med school and I joined the cadet program and I went to paramedic school instead. Um, but so we've been working on this for a few months now. We've got a pretty good base at it right now. Um, it's really kind of where we're at right now is we need to present it to the Board of Supervisors, Tina Insurance Company, stuff like that. But um, that's a big part of the P R thing that we can do. I mean, getting kids involved in it so they can see, hey.
There's various activities um with schools that I've been looking into. Um, I haven't contacted. The people I need to. I was working on that day before we got put on. For the. Yeah, so um, and like I said, I'm. I'm um in the midst of getting everything together yet, so.
Let's, let's get back to this real quick. And I, and Nicole, I understand your point, but I know there's more than this time here. Daylin, this is based on crew in Rockville City, crew in Lake City, a crew in Mass.
No, that is based on our current staff right now. It has nothing to do with locations or anything. That is. Our staff members to be fully staffed with two ambulances twenty-four seven, three sixty-five.
So two crews.
Two crews.
Because the, but to be honest, you can change this a different way. Bottom line is, is what they get to the jail, what it's going to be. And that's that bottom number. Which is on the second page. Now, Carrie, these are south, administrative costs, supply.
Mine is a secret, mine is a separate line item.
Okay.
So this, but this does include Linda Hammer. Right, the office.
Tina, what were we going to generate quickly as we pass one?
Not enough, but I don't remember that.
It was roughly, I think, about nine hundred thousand.
Yeah, okay. So that's a good place to start. The current budget from Scott is how much?
I think it's six hundred eighty thousand plus fifty-five thousand.
We're looking at. One point six million.
Right, one point four, one point.
And and what I'm saying, bottom line here is this will work. And if we give it time. And fact that you can get a raise. And there can be some on-call. But let's give this, just like you said, give it a shot till December. And see how it pans out. Because November rolls around and we vote. If it doesn't pass, things are going to have to change.
Right. And that's what we're kind of working to work towards is to see kind of where things are going to go. And it also falls hand in hand with. We have been short-staffed, so we've missed out a lot of working with the hospital.
More knows, I know.
Right, you've seen it, so.
We appreciate everything that's done now that.
But what I'm getting at is, is, is if we have a common focus and the November election is that, I don't see any problem. With this county passing that extra month. But we need to get out there and promote this. And that means everybody in the term has to be on board. Including me and the hospital. And the fact that if November rolls around and this fails.
If we.
Something drastic can happen.
We give you the numbers and the numbers don't work out and they don't make sense, then everyone's willing to accept, I'm sure. I don't want to speak for everyone else. They're willing to accept, hey, you gave us time to get all the stats. And if it doesn't work, I think people can understand that it doesn't work.
Because if November rolls around and it doesn't happen, then.
Is this twenty-four hour shift also, by the way, not twelve hour shift? So the twelve hours when we're done, right?
Um, I don't have anybody that wants to do twelves anymore and I'm fully staffed, so uh P R N staff can still do twelve.
You know, um, so is there like a job like what to the, I guess, that's doing twelve hours. Like, if they come in on the twelve-hour back part of it, do that's the time or do they?
I don't have that anymore. So uh uh getting a P R N to do a twelve-hour shift, Fair Labor Standards says they get paid. Um, the one that was doing it up until July first had all of the credentialing piece, the Amanda system updates. The uh Con Ed tracking and all of that, which she worked on during, while everybody else was sleeping. And 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 reports, she knows more of that.
So just to be clear, we're already on C because Eric started, so we're on track.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Well.
Yeah, Dan.
This is the B question. When we're talking about what the main focus was, I I guess my question would be, since we're fully staffed at. At all times, then was one of those angel ones moving to the hospital.
That will be part of the EMS plan that this group needs to set up and work on. They're still working on an agreement with the hospital.
And if we don't, if we can present these numbers to the board and get them to agree, because if what passes on the first. If we don't change anything or get them to move anything and you do have these drastic pay decreases of fifteen so percent, you won't have enough staff. To even worry about stepping in an ambulance somewhere else.
I will tell you, eighty percent of my staff does not live in Calum County. So, I mean.
Little things I want to ask about here. If you please sometimes send me that your schedule that you said was for in Kansas down there. I don't think I've ever seen that schedule.
Yeah, he wants to see your schedule, like how it stacks up like.
What you guys presented the other day or did you add?
We added the current. So we added the current. Uh, what everyone's getting paid, but then we also added a forty-eight ninety-six schedule, which Scott, I can. Scan those in and get those emails or faxed over to you tomorrow or something with how the scheduling works and what the uh. Payments and all that stuff would come out too. So you'd have the same charges all those other ones.
Then I also want to point out, like on that page two, where you have duty call, straight pay, you got sixteen hours there. I thought if we're not tied into fire or law enforcement, don't we have to pay overtime on anything over forty hours in a week?
Not if it's, not if it's class, not, if they work a twenty-four hour shift, Fair Labor Standards allows you to have up to eight hours of downtime. So you can do that and not pay, not count it towards overtime unless. They go out on a call, then anytime on that call, figure. they go out on a call, then anytime on that call figures into work time and that gets counted, and then if they don't get five hours of sleep, the whole eight hours get counted.
And, and I think we talked to Christie about it, Scott, and she can correct me if I'm wrong, um, or you can. But I believe that sleep rate can be set, as long as it's considered sleep time, then I still believe you can set the sleep rate amount. As long as it's above minimum wage or half, or above minimum wage, unless you change it to on-call, then it can be less than minimum wage, I believe.
Mike.
Okay, so, then the next thing was, I, I know when we're looking at these budgets, what's budgeted right now is seven-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars. Those first couple ones are way over that, and those first budgets then don't count for, like, any vacation or sick time or holidays. So, those aren't the actual budget numbers. They'll actually be higher than that, and I know, Daylon, when you put together your chart there with your, and it shows, like, salaries on here, where you're showing all the decreases in pay, overtime pay is not guaranteed. If you, I don't know if Carrie has it with her, but if you look at the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year pay increases, that was signed on six-thirty, you guys are exempt employees, you're paid by the hour, and each, every single one of you are getting a six percent increase, so there is not a decrease in the pay, it's just all the overtime that you're getting. So, I just want everybody to be aware there, technically, it was due to the, all the overtime, that you can't figure that in, and you're figuring salaries, you gotta look at what they're paid per hour, and multiply that out.
Yeah, it's, it's an hourly rate. It figures in sixteen hours of overtime, which is.
Yeah, it was figured on an hourly six percent increase, not just overall.
With sixteen hours of overtime, because that's what they currently get in a pay period. It doesn't count holidays, it doesn't count late calls, um, it doesn't count extra shifts if they have to come in and cover for somebody else. Or, yeah, meetings, trainings, stuff like that, there's, I, I can't, I can't come up with a set number of hours that would equal.
Dan, you better jump in there.
So.
Yeah.
My question, the question is, if, if the board supervisor says, yeah, you know, we'll study this through November, through the election, um, for the essential service part of it, at what point does the crew move, does a crew move to the hospital, would that be prior to that election, or is that contingent on that election?
No, it's not contingent on the election, it's contingent on the agreement that the county has with the hospital, us getting that tweaked and getting it finalized, and, you know, setting a date as to when that's gonna happen.
Dan, I can tell you, on my motion there, as it's put in there, this was set back on March twenty-third, we've had four months to work on this. Nothing else has come out, we're back to being full staff. In my point of view, the only reason why they got moved out of the hospital was due to the conditions they said for sleeping down there, there's new sleeping rooms there for them to sleep in, so my motion specifically states on which date that the ambulance will start coming back down to the hospital. We're back to full staff, so I don't know if the other two supervisors look at it different, but there will be two in Rockwell, then followed by two down in Lake City, followed by one back either Rockwell until Manson's ready, and then it goes up to Manson. That is how my motion is stated.
And these numbers that I presented do not account for that one extra person that wants to go to Manson, which would add approximately a hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars more to that number per year, per year. What does the, uh, medic, medic driver, or? It's just one person is what his motion was, so.
Well, I'm saying, like, on your crew, is it still medic driver, or is it medic EMT?
It's a medic and whatever else fits in there, I, down to three EMTs now and three drivers, so.
You've got the list right there now, right, I'm saying, that's correct for, like.
We'll, we'll use a medic driver, if that's what we.
We want a medic on every truck, and we do have enough paramedics, once everyone's off orientation, to keep everyone on a medic truck with two trucks.
And our drivers, part of them going full-time is that they would become EMTs. Within how long? Within a year, but they gotta be showing progress within six months. So, are they in the class currently, are they set up for the next class coming, like, so, okay, and the three EMTs listed here are licensed, yes.
Yep. With the service going back to Lake City, like, from Eric and I reached the God weekend, so we were part of the principal, that'd be still open, I don't.
I don't want, no, I don't want.
It's not, it's not overtime, so it would be a regular, a regular shift, so it would be that great.
So, moving back to, to see the educational part of it, and this is central service, is there any questions with that? As we're getting.
Getting like.
Well.
We're getting past.
Have we decided what the recommendation from the advisory council is going to be to the board supervisors for letter B?
I think Eric said, wait, you said, wait, the group needs to vote beside.
So, we, yeah, what, what's that recommendation going to be from this council to the board supervisors on July nineteen?
So, I guess. I'll move to request the supervisors to come in the revolution to say duty call and delay, and so, so we're just asking.
Yeah, 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 because we.
And training's going to pay for you guys, like, you guys are getting enough orientation time, you're getting enough full-time, you guys feel like you're getting oriented. And Luke, you, cuz I know you were the one that said, as long as they're, you, that's why you asked for August one, is so you could orientate them.
I, I don't know if you wanna wait till December or elections in November.
So, I guess, what, like, what is?
Is Brandon is, um, to the point where he can be on a two-person, just him and another medic, until he gets comfortable enough that he can be with an EMT, I expect him to be hopefully done with that by August first. Uh, Daylon just got his certification.
He's got certified last week.
Yeah, so, yeah, so he is just starting orientation, so he will be a three-person crew.
Okay.
Um, Cynthia is halfway between, she's working with Luke, um, she's still a three-person crew, but I'm hoping by the next couple of weeks, I can move her to a two-person.
She just hasn't gotten as many calls, Brandon.
Brandon.
He's got a black cloud over him. You don't wanna work with Brandon.
He's got lots of medication administration and all kinds of cardiac calls, and, and he's ready to be that, just with another paramedic that he can bounce things off, to be in the back by himself. Uh, Cynthia and Daylon will be a little bit behind on that, it may be past August first.
I don't, they, it's getting, yeah, so, that's right, cuz I know, Luke, you said, cuz of training, right, August first, the latest receiving time, too.
Now that we've, uh, been able to hire and work through the orientation, the next goal, the next challenge hurdle that we have, that is redeemed, new staff that we have.
We've got a good group, they're very smart, um, the drivers are oriented, the, um, one's still need a little bit more, but, um, he, he could drive. You know, so he can meet the criteria, I just need to, he's an EMT student, and I've told him, you've got to be careful that you don't do anything that could be considered patient care because you're an EMT student, I don't want you to get in trouble with the state and not get to be licensed, period, so, he's a little wary yet, we'll work on that, um, the others are ready to go, they can be as a crew member with a, uh, paramedic.
So, back to Mike, I'm okay with waiting, but I'm only getting to that election.
When's the next meeting, so, in August, November, wait until I do the November, that's next meeting here, so then we can see the statistics, present it to the board.
Yeah, and if we don't have a special meeting, again, we can do that as, as needed, that way we can kinda move forward. Last four months, it's been kind of said that we're not doing a whole lot, but on the backside, we are. Yeah. We're, we're bringing stuff, statistics, we're bringing graphs, we're doing this, we're doing that.
And I thought I sent out a draft PowerPoint that I'd like to get on Facebook, maybe I didn't, I know Cindy answered on, uh, made some suggestions on something. Uh, so, frequently asked questions, I've got that, I just kinda want to, um, get this going, and then we can work on what you guys want me to start getting out there, and then we need to set up meetings in all of the communities.
And with organizations.
And with organizations. So, and that's just contacting cities and organizations to see when we can speak.
And then I'm starting your PowerPoint, put some stuff into it, I didn't, I didn't see a draft of that, I think she's adding to it, but.
Okay, so, before you go far, you've got a motion, he revised it.
Motion to amend, show duty call instead of on-call and delay until the fourth Wednesday of November.
Motion, second, by Eric Wood, all, all those in favor, say aye. Louder. All those opposed? Motion, Carrie. Any other discussion?
As far as the educational, and, and the reason why I said groups is because I'm a member of, of lots of groups, and I'm been trying to, you know, they're planning their programs for the next few months, and I'm trying to get all of them to have a program on this topic. Um, and, you know, that's a little bit more intimate of a, of a presentation than presenting to the community.
Can I, when I get some dates and talk to organizations and have them call me and stuff like that, get dates, can I send it out to people, and if anybody is available to help with that to show up and, and be part of that with these communities and these meetings?
Well, I think it's important, when you do have the Lake City, that that, that not only we're there, the hospital there, it turns a representation of the lion.
But we.
And the newspaper has to be involved, Eric.
But we also have to have some plans, we also have to come up with plans to let our customers know what we're looking and trying to get to.
I, I wanna put on record that the cadet program that Brandon and Cynthia are putting together, I commend them for doing that and taking the initiative to bring that into the communities to move EMS in the right direction, so I, I wanna give them a little credit for, for what they've been doing on that. And, second of all, if we have no other discussion or any other issues motion to adjourn?
Only if I can follow up on your heels there, there is not a single cadet program in the state for EMS. Brandon and Cynthia are pioneering this, there's something. They're working towards it, but we did it first.
Well, they're not getting sued first.
And I will tell you, those two really took this and are running with it, it was an idea, and they have taken off and they have researched it, um, and they're working, Cynthia's already got contact information for the schools, and we'll be doing that, so I'm excited to see how that comes out. I, I, I'm, I'm really optimistic for that, I mean, even if we just get a few, if we can get some in the communities that are willing to first respond and do stuff like that would be amazing.
Getting the young people in the community, giving them one more reason to stay around, yeah.
And we started this fifteen years ago, and, and the schools were involved in it, and it just yeah, after the first year.
Doesn't have to be school age, cuz I have, like, a twenty-one and an eighteen-year-old that are still trying to figure out their path online. I'm not smart enough. I'm still trying to figure that out, I'm almost sixty-years-old, I'm still trying to figure out my path.
I mean, I don't see why we couldn't start them as cadets to come in and see how it goes, the plan is to be able to utilize them in events and have people see them, and, and then as they go forward, and this is the piece with the insurance company and Tina and liability waivers with parents and stuff, calls, you know, they can set up times to do it, go on calls with the paramedic in charge, say, you stay here in this, don't come out based on what it is, or you don't even get to leave the station type stuff, and that's what they're risking, yeah, so.
I just wanna say this sounds great, thanks, everybody, for a good meeting and a motion to adjourn.
You just took the word right out of my mouth.
You're welcome.
Do you have anything before we?
Anyone online have anything else to discuss? Hey, motion to adjourn, second. All those in favor?